So it is 7:45. I'm gonna call the December 2nd, 2024 Biennial Organizational Meeting of the School Committee to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, when in question, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So welcome.
Erin Earl, here. Robert Case.
Here.
Jennifer Leemar, here. Megan Riley.
Here.
Sherri Kennedy.
Here.
Christine LaPierre. Joshua Bush.
Okay. Do we have anyone sign up for something?
No.
Do we need to sign up or?
Yeah, you can. That's fine.
I'll do this afterwards. Anne Gertman, 90 Plunditch Road. Congratulations first off to the re-elected and newly-elected members. With the successful passage of the school bond and so many uncertainties at the national level as far as education policy, our district is at a pivotal moment. To ensure we achieve the goals we've set forth, consistent leadership will be essential. The work of the School Committee in shaping policy, ensuring fiscal responsibility, and championing the needs of our students and staff is vital to the success of our schools. Your efforts to foster equitable access to resources, improve educational outcomes, and support critical infrastructure projects will have a lasting impact on our community. As we move forward, maintaining a seamless and effective transition from one term to the next is essential. In the past few years, we've had numerous changes to the school department administration and the School Committee itself. Newly-elected public servants often face a steep learning curve. Despite attending meetings or paying attention to the issues, there is a lot to learn and absorb in their new role as School Committee members. Therefore, I would recommend keeping the existing leadership in place. The experience Dr. Earl and Rob Case bring to the table will be invaluable in ensuring the successful facilitation of the school construction projects, in addition to advancing the district's priorities. Thank you for your time and your continued dedication to our schools and our community.
Does anybody else want to speak that didn't sign up? Okay. So next up is the election of officers. I am going to start with the School Committee Chairperson, and I am going to make a nomination for Erin Earl for Chair.
I will second.
Any discussion? So I just want to make a comment about my nomination. After we finally have achieved some stability in our district administration, I believe that it will be a disservice to change leadership on this committee. You know, Dr. Earl was put into the Chair position two years ago as a new member, and despite her experience in similar roles, there was still a steep, steep learning curve. She's been a strong leader over the past two years, navigating the committee through many challenges, and more importantly, she's been unwavering in her commitment to students, and she views every decision through the lens of what's best for them. And that's the reason for my nomination. If there's no other comments, I'll call the vote. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And before I turn it over, I would just like to take a moment and welcome the new members to the committee. You know, we all bring different perspectives and strengths to the table, but I think that's a good thing, and I'm really looking forward to what we as a group can accomplish as we work together for the students of this district. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. I just want to echo Jen's sentiment and congratulate Jen and Teri on joining the School Committee. You've both been obviously very active in the community and with advisory committees and, you know, giving a lot of feedback to the School Committee, and so I also look forward to working with people. And so that brings us to item B under election of officers, and so the first item is School Committee Vice Chairperson. Do we have a nomination?
I'll make a motion to nominate Rob Case as Vice Chair.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, but we can call the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And then we'll move on to appointment of standing committee and liaisons. And so we will take these one by one, just to clarify the policy. For the majority of the committees, we need at least one School Committee member to be a liaison for the advisory committee or the negotiation team. Per our policy, we are allowed to have up to two if more than one School Committee member is interested, and then if more than three are interested, we will do a roll call vote on, you know, like we'll do a vote and then it's a roll call vote per our policy. Additionally, we have the one other outstanding policy, which is the Policy Subcommittee Charge, which is BGA-1, and that one does designate that there are two members on that committee specifically. And so we have an order in front of us, so we'll take it in that order.
Sorry, can I make a motion to start with the statutory committees?
Yeah, we can do that. So just say, just make a motion to move Health and Wellness and Building to first and second, or whichever order you want it to be.
Yes, and CLAC, I believe.
Yep.
Okay.
That one. Is that statutory as far as the liaison part?
Yes.
I believe that's in the regulation.
You can do all three. And one more, what about the, because I'm not sure about the town charter with the town, the Veterans Scholarship Fund? I just, I just want to make sure. I'm not sure if that is statutory per se.
That, that one I'm not familiar with. I can take a quick look while, while you guys are talking.
Okay.
It's in the charter, you said?
If you want to just move all four.
Sure.
That would be.
And that's in the, I'm sorry, that's in the charter?
Rob, you're on the committee, so is that the?
It was set up by the town council. I don't think it's in the charter, but.
Let me take a look.
We do have like a distinct spot on the.
Or a School Committee member.
Yeah. All right, so Megan, just make a motion to move the letters of the items, like say like.
Sure.
B, whatever, 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 and then if you have a second, we can vote on it?
Sure. So I'd like to make a motion to move B, D, and F, and if we're gonna do the veterans, aye, please.
Second.
Okay. Jules, you got a second on that one? Okay. All those in favor of moving those items to one, two, three, and four, please say aye.
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 Okay, and so we'll start with Building Advisory Committee.
I'll make a motion to nominate Megan Riley.
Do we have a second? Okay. Any discussion?
Are we doing both at once or one at a time?
What do you think would be?
I would do one at a time.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll do one at a time. So any discussion on that nomination? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then I'd also like to nominate Rob Case.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Sorry, any discussion?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And then next one up is D, so the appointment to Health and Wellness.
And I'm making sure you can.
A second?
Okay. Any discussion on that?
Just y'all can say no if you get nominated for something like. It sounds like we're like Taggart.
I figured this was a given.
Yes, and we appreciate your service to the committee before. All right, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And then is anyone else interested in self-nominating or nominating someone else to be on that committee? Have one, Teri. Okay, so then next up is CLAC?
I nominate Erin Earl.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay, discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, anyone else interested in nominating someone else for that or self-nomination? Bless you.
Bless you.
Okay, and then moving on to Veterans. I believe it's one member for that one.
Yes.
Okay, do we have a nomination for the Veterans Scholarship Committee?
Just wanted to do one.
Yeah.
I can do it.
I'll nominate Rob.
Yeah. A second. Okay, so we have a motion and a second for Mr. Case. Any discussion?
Who seconded?
Uh, Megan did.
I did.
Um, just. Okay, any other discussion? If you're willing, if you want to continue to start on that one. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, where are we? Okay, so now back to the beginning unless anyone else wants to move anything around. Okay, we'll start back up at A, so the appointment to the Budget and Finance Advisory Committee.
I'll nominate Sherri Kennedy.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion regarding Sherri's nomination? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I would like to nominate Jen to be on that one.
Second.
I feel like you get a lot of questions answered at that level that might expediate the top level.
Yep.
Just saying. It might be better for all of us. No, no, I think you were very astute at that question.
No, I'll just decide.
Any further discussion on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll call the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to DEI.
I'll nominate Jen.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion? Okay, hearing none, we'll call the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, anyone else interested in nominating or self-nominating?
I would like to nominate you.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to Policy.
I want to nominate Megan Riley.
Okay, do we have a second? Oh, can I second myself?
You can.
Yes.
Okay, discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, so we don't, you don't vote.
That's all right. No, that's okay.
Someone else want to nominate someone?
I nominate Erin Earl.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 And then we need one more for that one.
I'll nominate myself.
Okay, do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to. Thank you. So this is the School Redistricting Start Time and Transportation Advisory Committee nominations.
Megan.
I was gonna nominate myself.
So I'll nominate Megan Riley.
Okay.
It's always like, do you want to do it?
Yeah, no, I actually did.
Great. Okay, all those, any further discussion on that one? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Doctor, do you have thoughts on one, your preference on one or two School Committee members for that one?
Doesn't matter. One's okay.
Okay.
If you want to, I don't mind nominating myself.
It's totally up to you if you want to do it, but I feel like if maybe don't spread or something, then it's.
All right.
Yeah.
Make sure you want to be by yourself.
Yeah, and that's something we could always revisit later, like depending on where the committee goes and what the needs are.
It's a new committee. I know the wellness, like I've been on it for two.
But we have some strong people, it looks like, on that committee, so.
Yep. Yeah, so Dr. Duba, you could.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, so.
I won't be alone.
Thank you, Sherri, for the offer, and then if we, at later time, we could always recircle to that as well. We're on, okay, so that's, we get all the committees and temporary committees, right?
No, we need H, the discipline.
Thank you, thank you, yep. So Temporary Advisory on District Discipline Practices and Policies.
I'll nominate Rob.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Can I ask a question? That one is only.
Till February?
Right, okay.
Yep, so in theory, the past committee had set up the Temporary Advisory Group to have its final recommendations to us by February. In February, they will either present us with the final work, or the chairs could ask for an extension on that deadline, but the goal was for that to be wrapped up by February. So that's only a commitment from now until then, in theory.
And it's co-chaired by a School Committee member and a staff member.
Okay.
Which is currently Rachel Santon.
Yep. Anyone else interested in nominating someone for that one or self-nominating? I actually, I'll nominate myself for that one.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And then. Now we're on to the negotiation teams. So we have the North Kingstown Bus Contractors Association Negotiation Team. Do we have a nomination for that?
So just a question on this. Do these reset, like the nominations that we made are now, like, that we made two weeks ago, do they still exist, or do we?
I would say that if the existing member is still on, that person would remain on, and then you could set, like I said, if you want to do two people, which I think all these do, then that would be up for a vote. Only because we also picked all the meeting dates. I mean, a lot of the meeting dates for both of these are already set.
Yep, so right now, the current folks, I think it's only the two. I don't know if we've done Jamestown at all, so. Myself is on, I'm on negotiation for the bus contractors, and then Mr. Case, you're on for.
ESP.
ESP, but to that point, if new members are interested in being in either of those, we can definitely have two, most certainly, so we can take other. Do we have to re-vote on that, though? Does the new committee need to reconfirm us? Yes, technically. I vote yes. Well, no, because it's a new committee, so I feel like they, if they wanted to change it, they could.
In theory. So we need a nomination for the NK BCA negotiations.
So I just, you got stuck with it last time because you were the only one who like we knew for sure was going to be here.
Yeah, I'm happy to stay on it, though, because we, yeah, we already had started some conversations with them, and it's like I'm happy. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's hard to you because, yeah.
I'll second that.
Who, who, did I, okay, got it, got it, got it, thank you. Any discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, anyone want to join?
I'll nominate myself.
Okay.
I'll second.
Great. You have a meeting tomorrow, so I need to know. Wait, no, we do, why?
That's all right.
We took it on Wednesday. I'm all like. Meeting, don't. No, no pressure, but I will send you the info just so you have it at the end of the meeting. Okay, so that is, we voted, right? No.
No.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And then the next one is NK ESP, so if we want to have Rob continue, we need a nomination for that.
I'll nominate Rob.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, and then any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, and then anyone interested in joining Rob on the NK ESP negotiations?
Should I give like dates and times of the meetings and stuff, and information?
That's fair. For the best one, but yes, sure.
So, so far, all of the meetings for ESP are generally two to four in the afternoon here in the district office. The next meeting is January 6th, so you have some time before the next meeting. We actually had a meeting today to exchange initial proposals, but, so it's like, I think it's almost like every other Monday or something. It's the 6th, the 23rd, the 27th, and then we set February 10th and March 3rd in case we need it, but it's all two to four, and I believe those are mostly Mondays. There may be a Thursday in there, but they're two to four here in the district office with the ESP community members.
Thank you for that. Anyone want to nominate or self-nominate for that?
Oh, do you want help? I mean.
No, I, I think, well, there's two spots on there, so if we want two, we can have two.
I would defer to Dr. Duba. I think one's.
And it's okay to have one. We don't have to have two, and I know the time might not work for everyone, so I mean, it's okay, continue with one School Committee member on there, so. And when we're ready, we'll be bringing stuff back to during executive session.
Yeah, we'll see stuff in the executive anyway, so. All right. So no room for the no votes for that. And then for NK Jamestown Negotiation Team, any nominations?
I did it last time. I wouldn't mind doing it again if nobody wants to do it.
Yeah.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have.
I feel like I just got stuck with the simple there. It was like, yeah, you do it.
I'm pretty sure you did it to yourself. Okay.
A little bit.
Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay. Anyone interested in a second nomination for that one? Okay, hearing none, that brings us to the end of the appointments for standing committee and liaisons, and so we'll move on to the appointment of School Committee clerks. And so we, Dr. Duba, do you want to make a recommendation, or do you want us to just? I think we technically have to vote on Jules and Joanie.
It's called an appointment, but the policy calls for appointment by the School Committee, so I think it's just a motion and a second.
Yep.
Do we have to do them one by one, or together?
No, we could do them together. Andrew, that's a question.
Yeah, take it, I realize we had two.
Andrew, two different people come here to different meetings. Yes, we did.
Do you want to continue?
Well, we know that we're trying to find, this would be an interim appointment until we are able to find someone to fill the role that we have posted, yeah, but we do need someone in the interim, so that's why I was referring to you on who it might be, if current people or different people.
We, I'll be honest, we did not have a discussion prior to this.
You made the agenda.
Well, I, yeah.
Could we, if we table it, what happens, Andrew?
The policy says the Chairperson can present appointments at the next regular meeting, so it's all right, so if you want to table it.
I would just keep it the same, I mean, because we do, I mean, like, I would just keep it. They're both, they're sharing a position right now, and we have the position open.
Yep.
And so until it's filled, they share the position.
Okay, so we'll just make that motion. So, so I'll move to, for the appointment of the School Committee clerks, to go to our current clerks, which is Jules and Joanie.
I'll second that.
Any discussions?
Just one question. So when we do hire a person, do we have to unappoint them?
My question.
Because we won't be appointing the person.
Correct, because that's, that's a posted position, is that what it stands now?
Just change the policy.
Yeah, I think they would, we probably just have a conversation whether they would just step down, and then you may have to tweak this as far as bringing a new person in.
Maybe just get a letter from them that they're resigning from it, and then.
Yeah, and then maybe tweak that policy.
From now until the nightly meetings.
Okay, any further discussion? Jules and Joanie, we appreciate you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And then on the agenda packet, we have the School Committee dates, and so I believe they're also printed, since obviously our newly-appointed folks do not have access to the systems yet, but when you do get access to the systems, you'll get not only these dates, but also the attachments to this meeting had all of the advisory dates as well for all of the different meetings that are upcoming, and then they're also public on the website. These are the different meeting dates, so any questions regarding the review of the meeting, our next one will be December 16th, which is a joint budget with the town, and then December 17th, which will be a regular business meeting for the School Committee.
Is the joint budget at Town Hall?
Yes, it's at Town Hall, and if I remember correctly, it's a fairly short meeting. It's kind of procedural to start off the joint one. No, no, I really think it is. It's not, it's not that. I'll knock anyways. Any questions regarding the calendar? You will see some additional meetings in February for budget workshops, in addition to an extra business meeting as it is budget hearing. We have the joint one with the town in April, and then we add special ones as we did. Any questions regarding that? And then, as I said, the advisory committee dates are all posted. For the advisory committees to be able to meet, they do need to meet quorum, and those are all on the calendar, and if anything needs to be changed, just let Dr. Duba know. And then additionally, you'll get these attachments. I'll also send an email tomorrow with you all, kind of like a, like an intro email that kind of goes over all these different things, but these meetings are in accordance to the open meeting law, which is attached to the agenda that you'll get, and also we've attached the power of duties of the School Committee for the state of Rhode Island. Any questions regarding those? You can always feel free to send them to us.
So if you change like a subcommittee meeting, like say you didn't get quorum, do you bring it back to getting approved?
Yeah, that's a great question. No, so what we would do in that case is say you sent something out to the members and you didn't have quorum, and you were like, oh, we can't have the meeting on this date. The advisory committee meetings still need to fall under the 48-hour rule for posting an agenda, and so depending on the timing of when that is, you could work with your co-chair in the committee to figure out another time, and as long as it gets posted. and as long as it gets posted forty-eight hours in advance.
Of the new meeting?
Yep, yep.
Okay, so you don't have to like come and get the new date?
No, we deliberately do not approve the advisory dates for that reason, like it's just before us to look at. Yeah, our goal is that they, we tried to set them all in advance so that they could be consistent for the members. Oh, no, no.
I was just curious, because I know sometimes you don't make quorums.
Yeah, and also. Yeah, and then also we wanna try to give as much notice to the community members as possible.
Because Trish sent out the wellness subcommittee for Wednesday's meeting, so we did do the forty-eight hours.
Yes.
Which was good.
And will we get a list of the members who are listed?
Yeah, so I was keeping track as we were going through, and so I'll send the intro letter, and then I'll also have an attachment of like the information for the different advisory committee members as well. Okay.
Did you mean like a list of us or a list of people?
No, a list of the members on the committee.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, that's what I mean. Okay. Great, any other questions? And then that may.
Motion to adjourn.
Yep. Second, second. Okay, thank you so much.